Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of Eastwinds Town Council. Love to see you all here after Christmas, so Happy New Year to you all. It's an exciting year ahead. We've got a lot to get through, we've got a very busy agenda, so hopefully we can whizz through business tonight. And thank you for the members of the public that are in the room and on Zoom. Item number one on the agenda is public question time. I believe we have two people that want to speak. So we're going to close the door quickly. Our councillors are coming in. Let me slow a few members up there now. Okay, everyone is in the room now. So I think we have two questions. So if those people are wanting to speak.
Yes, there are two members of the public in the Zoom room who have indicated they'd like to speak. So this is your opportunity, so do so now. We've got Mr Barrows.
Hi, good evening everybody and Happy New Year. Can you all hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Yeah, fantastic. So I was locked in a room as a teenager by the Church of Scientology and I'm aware dozens of other people have experienced abuse at their St Hill headquarters. What are the council doing to protect the public and especially children from abuse? And how do councillors justify attending events hosted by Scientology in light of these allegations?
Thank you very much for your questions and thank you for coming on. Really important question time, we only really accept one question. There were kind of two very, very different and quite in-depth questions there. Which one would you like us to really focus on there?
Let's start with the first one in that case. You know, what are the council doing to protect people and especially children from abuse at St Hill in light of these allegations?
Thank you. I think that's quite a complex question to answer without any pre-warning to that question. As any allegations towards that would need to be legally referenced for us to make a response to. Town clerk, would you like to?
Well, the only thing I can say, the town council are not the public authority who deal with protection of adults, protection of children, obviously that comes under West Sussex County Council. However, if the town council were aware and had concerns of that nature, then obviously the town council would report those as appropriate to the appropriate authority. I don't know as much else I can really say, Chair.
I think you're right, I think the town council isn't the right authority for that, but if you do have any questions or concerns, then you can also raise them through the official channels, through the clerk, and then we can take that up with West Sussex, you can take that up further on your behalf if you wanted to.
Thank you very much.
Lovely, we have another question as well.
Cool, can I go ahead?
Please do.
Thank you and good evening everyone. My question is wordy, but it is distilled to one question, so please hear me out. So in the run-up to the Church of Scientology's International Association of Scientologists event in November 2023, church officials at St Hill failed to give the required six weeks' notice for an premises licence to the licensing authority. Reaching such conditions is considered a serious offence with a possible fine of up to £20,000 and/or six months imprisonment stipulated under the Licensing Act. Yet despite this breach, the Church of Scientology received merely an advisory email to give notice in the future. Section 10.1 of the Local Government Association Model Code of Conduct, which I know is on the agenda this evening, states that councils should not accept gifts or hospitality irrespective of estimated value, which could give rise to real or substantive personal gain or a reasonable suspicion of influence to show favour from people seeking to acquire, develop or do business with a local authority. So this in my mind raises questions about the relationship between the Church of Scientology and elected officials generally. Therefore, my question is such. To what extent do councillors agree that the continued attendance of Church of Scientology events, such as the Christmas light switch-on and the receipt of gifts, including charitable donations, risk undermining the integrity of the council and bringing councillors into disrepute?
Thank you. Again, a long question without proneness, there's a lot to think about in a very short period of time. I believe that through the standards from Mid Sussex, your question, part of your question has already been answered and that we have a robust system in place, which is actually going to be further discussed tonight about gifts and donations, that we are fully in compliance with all regulatory bodies about that and all declarations are fully clear, transparent and disclosed by all councillors that attend any event. In regards to charity checks, that is obviously quite common for charity checks to be collected and received by councillors on behalf of charities. In fact, tonight we are handing out checks to sports council awardees. So I'm not sure how charities give influence in that way, can be influenced that way. And that's quite general and quite normal conduct for local authorities up and down the country. We represent all members of our community and do so evenly and even-handedly. So I thank you for your question and I hope that those answers do answer it slightly for you, but they are quite complex and quite tricky questions there. But thank you and thank you both for coming in and giving your time tonight to ask those questions. We do appreciate all public participation, thank you. There's no other members of the public in the room that wants to ask questions, are there? And nobody else on the Zoom, Town clerk?
There's nobody else on the Zoom.
Okay, thank you. In that case, we can move on to item number two. The person that's just arrived in the Zoom room, do they wish to ask a question? Okay, we shall move on to item number two, which is to comment on item 730, apologies for absence. Do we have any, Town clerk?
Oh, apologies from councillor Scott, who is unwell.
You want me to move to accept that?
Please, yes.
I will propose that we accept that, can I have a second for that? And Sheriff Hans is up there, thank you.
That's carried, thank you Chair.
Item number three is to confirm the minutes of the town council meeting held on the 4th of October. These are for accuracy, I'd like to propose them, could I have a second please? Any comments or questions about those minutes? Second, I have a hand, I have a hand to stop it. Item number four is just to see if any declarations of personal or culinary interest, any new declarations, obviously relating to the business on tonight's agenda. So item number five is town mayor's announcements, we'll do this in two parts. The first part is a really nice bit, which is to award the youth sports grants. Obviously, you've all had your money electronically, but we do have the big cheque for the vote opportunity. I would like to go through each of you one by one, if you could just invite you just to stand up, say who you are and say a few words about your grant and what it means to you and what we're doing with it. So first, we're going to start with assets with Dino Football Club, Rowkes.
I might be invited first. Always a grant, but anyway. Thank you very much for this grant. It brings a hammer, I must give some idea. We've got over 300 young children ranging from the age of six right up to 18. And we've got roughly about 18 teams. Obviously, we play in different leagues, we play at five different venues, we haven't got a one ground. But I would say 90% of the children are in Ashersford Junior Football Club, are in that pack, can't probably finish it. So it is legal. We're accepting money, all the houses, believe me, it goes to express potential. We've been going, well, I've been going for about, well, longer than 10 years, obviously, but I've been doing the job at Ashersford for 10 years. And believe me, it's very, I moan about it, but believe me, it's very, very enjoyable. Very, I have two grandchildren that have gone through the rigmarole from five to 18 and they thoroughly enjoy it. And I'm a great believer in sport added to children's education, I think it's so important. But thank you again. This money goes through various items, but we're going to apply for it for new goals, which we've got. We paid out money for a grant over at Cowden, would you believe? You know, we're even venturing out to different counties, but they've gone up and it's superb, so thank you again.
Thank you, Ray. On Eastwinds Sports Club, Victor Lemar.
Hello, hello everybody. I'm a trustee of Eastwinds Sports Club and just want to say thank you as well for the contribution. It's not very often you put an application in and you get a little bit more than you're expecting. But we've got a significant project, just to remind those that may not be aware, we're trying to build four covered paddle tennis courts on the top tier of the netball course, for those of you that know the site at the sports club. It's a community club, it's not a private members' club or anything like that. And in this particular, we want to make the courts available for the schools. We know the sports representation from the schools very well and give free court usage to the schools during daytime, so that the schools can come up and have a go with paddle. It's not too, almost a sport, exercise-wise, it's probably not like squash, which is hard work, tennis is very hard work, as me looking at jumps. And so it's not too much, it's not too much on the exercise part, so hopefully we'll get a lot of people that will want to give it a go, which is what we're trying to do. And these funds will be spent on coaching and court hire time for those children as we get them built. And we're hoping to get them built in May or May time, hopefully, if we can get, raise the money, get planning commission, which is in. I don't know if that's come through here yet, but it's in, it's just gone in just before Christmas. Thank you very much, the funds are much appreciated.
Eastwinds Cricket Club, Christian Hart.
Good evening, everybody, thank you very much for your work, thank you very much for the grant, we really appreciate it. I can tell that it will be completely delivered towards the All-Star ECP programme, which I think you'll be aware of it. Specifically for children who are five to eight years old. In order to cover the sad individuality of that, perhaps that sport isn't delivered at their primary source. So it gives them the chance to be involved in sport, perhaps they wouldn't have seen the past. Maybe you may not be aware, unfortunately, when you purchase the opportunity to do the All-Star programme, right, all the money goes to the ECP, not one penny goes to actually the clubs that deliver it. And when you have between 50 and 80 children that we have who are five to 80, with a number of coaches that deliver it. So the entire role goes to the coaching and delivering.
Crawley Down Gatwick Football Club Under Tens, Jenny Corrigan.
Yeah, just a massive thank you for all the grant. We applied for it primarily for this time of year, every season since we started managing under five. And every year at this time of year, we miss out massively football due to the weather. I'm a member of the Eastwinds Sports Club myself, so we thought we'd apply for a grant that would help us be able to pay in, pay to train and play games at the sports club. A little bit of extra cricket in the third round as well. My party was actually from Eastwinds, although it was Crawley Down. So yeah, we wanted to keep everything local and keep the boys playing as much as we can for the season.
Really, thank you very much. We've got Eastwinds Target Shooting Club, Mike Cattleton.
Hello, hello everybody else, thank you very much for your help, very appreciative. And we're going to notice when you have this one for junior sections. It was kind of a lot cheap. We have a couple of juniors now and since we became a lot of talent, we've been getting lots of opportunities from the younger section of the juniors, beginning sort of ten up plus. Normally, we only do it in fourteen months. So if we're going into the year, some of things, we can start at ten and actually be more than that. So that's to help us do that, at this point.
So junior one, so smaller than Gripples, that's the complete, that's all, like, he was there to each other. A big coach, I find it amazing when I see juniors coming, they've had a shot before. And I think it's very easy, and I'm sharing the technicalities of it. And the first season, they get about three or four shots away, really good, considering they've never shot before. Then it's concentration drifts, so it's just very lonely. From the time they've been there with a straightforward on the trot, you can see the concentration gets better and better and better. It's really, that can only be good when they go forward in the sort of working community and develop and series. I find it's been a very good support, I love it, something I'll never want off. I'm very happy to feature anybody else, I believe. Thank you very much on stage for that.
We've got Eastwinds Football Club, Brian.
Very good evening all, and my name's Paul Kedell, I'm the vice chairman and shop secretary at Eastwinds. Again, as everyone, I always thank very much for that for the grant. Everyone at the football club at Eastwinds Town, completely volunteers, no one gets paid for what they're doing, it's an awful lot of work. It goes in to put the football on to do this in the town by not that many people. So any grant, any money that is raised, takes a lot of raising. We've been approached by a couple of parents to start two new youth teams next season, sort of compliments of the football club. So next season, we're looking to start another tour, we're on the seventeen, I'm saying. So the cost involved in starting a team in tracks, you get to an hour band a change, fifty-four is kickable. So it does take a lot of getting from various places. So a grant like this could make a big difference to clubs like us. So that's where we've gone towards, it's going towards training for coaches. Things they have to go through, the coaching qualifications and kick wise and whatever. The money's going to be used, so again, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Is that correct? So what we're going to do, gentlemen, we're going to go down to corner five of the school.
You're very welcome to stay first in the meeting. Or you can go. And a little bit of fresh fruit after.
Thank you. Thank you guys, safe journey home in this night. Okay, so the next thing I'm going to go to is just to discuss some of the events and things and highlights of the last few months as mayor. It has been a very, very busy few months. Everyone who passed mayor has warned me that it'd be busy. I didn't quite appreciate quite how busy it would be, but equally, how absolutely rewarding it would be. It has been some of the best months of my life. Seeing some of the charities and organisations within our town has been truly inspiring, humbling and eye-opening. I'm going to go through a few of the items on here, but firstly, we'll start with a bit more positive one. I'd like to thank everyone that came along and supported some of my charity events, from the barn dance, you all looked fabulous, through to my carol concert and other events. Thank you all the councillors that supported and my deputy who has been by my side for all of it, thank you. Attending events as mayor isn't always some of the big things, it can be some of the smaller, tiny little organisations that only have a handful of members and going along and supporting them, like the chess club, we gave them a small grant and it's amazing to see the chess club in Eastwinds, the community and the love that they have for the game and being together and activity for sometimes slightly older demographic in the town is great, they were a great group of people. I went to a premiere of a film made by a local filmmaker called Broken Eyes and it managed to get it in the cinema in Eastwinds, he's grown up in the town, I've known him actually a long time in the town and it was great to see this guy, he's won national awards, this film, Eastwinds did talent out there, it was great to go and see. One of the ones that was really incredible was the night that my wife and I spent out with the street pastors. It rained in a biblical manner. It was entertaining, there was a lot going on in town that night as well, it was a payday weekend, there was a boxing match at Chequemee, there was a boxing match streamed live on telly and there was a lot of activity. And to see the love and fearlessness that the street pastors went out with to protect people and handing out flip flops when girls had lost their shoes and bottles of water to help people that maybe had had a little bit too much enjoyment was great. But the thing that really struck home was, especially with young girls, they saw the street pastors were out and you could see their body language change, they knew that somebody was there watching out, making sure they're okay when they left the pub or the club. And seeing that was amazing and the work they do all through the year and all weathers should be applauded. One of the fun ones was going to talk to the beavers and I love talking to the kids, going to talk to the beavers and the schools and the absolutely brilliant questions that they ask me, absolutely bonkers questions. I love that, it just makes me smile and the enjoyment in their faces is lovely. Another great one was a very busy weekend in the middle of November, was the Lions PSA testing that was held here. And thank you to councillor Whitaker for his hard work on that day as well. But watching the men come through to be tested rather sheepishly in large numbers that were sold out was incredible and the percentage of people that were, something would have been flagged and that they go and get checked and it saves a life, there were people there volunteering who had, their prostate cancer had been caught by this testing in the past. And as men we are, let's be honest, a bit rubbish at doing this sort of thing. And the work the Lions are doing to help the people in that community there is huge and that was, that was great to see, so well done to them. Then we had the Remembrance Sunday, which I think everyone who walked in that parade acknowledges that Eastwinds did comes out and supports that in a way that is so inspiring, it is lovely to do it. It's strange to say it's lovely to do on a sad event, but I'm so proud of Eastwinds and so proud of all of you guys turning out for that, thank you. Then we had the big reveal. Wasn't that amazing? I mean, the amount of people, it was standing room only from the Robert Dyers crossroads right up to the top of the town. I was one of the founding people that started that one, the first 10 shops that ever did it when I had my shop in the high street. And to see it grow from an idea where we thought we would just paper up the windows, everyone would think we were closing down, then suddenly go ta-da, here's that because of windows, to the event it has become with the tree lights going on and the Christmas lights going on. And to see everyone volunteering and helping and working there was just brilliant. I mean, to turn the lights on to that sea of people in my very tasteful suit was just lovely. The suit, by the way, has grown its own personality and people started requesting the suit along with the mayor to events. One that was slightly out of town, but very important to our town was the St Catherine's Hospice opening to go to their new facility. If you get a chance in any capacity to go up there, hopefully in a capacity of councillors, not in the capacity that it's required. It's amazing what they have built and the future-proofing that they have there now to provide more end-of-life care for local residents is incredible. The extra care that it will be able to provide and the better working conditions for staff and the more types of people it can take now is great. And it's the generosity of so many people donating and supporting that has meant this has happened. And they're now, you know, they're moving patients in, patients are in there, go over and have a look if you can, because it's brilliant. A fun one was the Safford Concert at Chequemee, that was lovely, that was a really nice one, they got everyone feeling very Christmasy, that was great to see them in Chequemee. Makes me again so proud of how great Chequemee is, along with the panto, which was just incredible. Oh, come on, someone. Thank you, thank you, Lee.
You're very welcome, Chairman.
Sorry, we can have that behind us. So that was great. A lovely one was the Sackville College carols. If you ever get a chance to go and do that, buy yourself a ticket next year, go along to it. To sing in the little chapel there is lovely and then halfway through they stopped and did a reading all about Good King Wenceslas that was obviously written there and then to go and see where that carol was actually written was lovely. That facility and what they do there, they need people to go along and buy those tickets and support them because it requires the, all the financial help it can get and it is so beautiful in the centre of our town. Another one which I know is very close to councillor Pickock's heart here, which is the Being Naverly Christmas Lunch. What a fantastic organisation that is in our town to help people, I always try and say this, it's social isolation. But meeting and I went around and chatted to everyone that was there and their stories of genuine loneliness in the elderly in our, in our community. They just, without that, they would be really stuck of who to talk to and their friends and going out, having a Christmas dinner so kindly supported by Dunning's Mill, paid for by the people having the charity quizzes there, that they take the money and pay for this meal. Was great, watching these elderly couples and people on their own getting slowly more drunk and enjoying their Christmas festivities was lovely to see. Then we got into some sort of more serious ones with the food bank, Bagpack in the town, which is a military operation. I'm sure many of you have been to the food bank at the Jubilee, if you haven't, go and have a look, those guys run that so well. It's such a shame that in our town, we still require that food bank to be as big and as professional as it is. And they need as much help as we can give them, but that bag pack, if you get a chance to next year, they're always looking for volunteers to go along and help. And that was a really good thing to do for Christmas. Slightly eclipsed by the 23rd of December, the Greenaway Foundation, check Christmas, not Bagpack, but the, the, sorry, the putting out of food and delivering of food. It started with five families and there was over 900 families delivered to this year. Full Christmas meal, presents of the value of £25, personally selected for children. Cancelled the bell and his wife were there and you were there as well, Tukleka, and to see the effort that goes in and the need was exceptional. The bit that affected me and my wife the most was the bit slightly outside, which was a huge line of these that were for people suffering from domestic violence or hiding from it. And Karen and I were given the great privilege to go and deliver some of these, we went right up to Rye Gate in Red Hill and out and about delivering sort of these to people. And what they did was to give Christmas to people that had no hope of a Christmas and to those children. And that was amazing, I think the more that us as councillors can support these sort of initiatives and help, the better. And although it was a terrible sad feeling and to see it was devastating, the need for it, it made me really feel so grateful. And although it was a terrible sad feeling and to see it was devastating, the need for it, it made me really feel so grateful for everything I have in life and how much we have and how many of us have the simple things that are missing from so many people. And it was incredible. I had a couple of other ones this, this year already. Kicked out the blocks early with Inberhorne School's A level presentations, which was amazing. Lots of very hungover kids dragged in to collect their, their A level certificates before they go back to university. Were sitting there with their parents looking like Kevin, teenager. That was great. But then yesterday I attended the first veterans breakfast at the Sussex pub. And it was, it was great. The work that Paul Grief and his committee have put together there to bring that to the fore is amazing. Veterans that can't get to Crawley, the nearest one was that live in East Grinstead and they struggled to get over there for a million days. Now have somewhere they can drop in, they can seek help, they can meet people, they can discuss. And already from conversations yesterday, we're helping a few people that have come out of the woodwork. So a huge thank you to Paul and his team for putting that together. It was great. But as I say, it's been, it's been busy. That is just a little highlight of some of the events, but all of them are amazing. And as councillors, we are given the privileged position to help these people, to look behind the curtains of our community. And we have an amazing community, the volunteers, the people that are helping without any thanks, anything is amazing. So thank you to all of you for your support. And I know I've whittled on a little bit on this, but it was a, a long one and there were a lot on there that I wanted to give thanks and highlight. So thank you. Looking forward to it next year, mate. Item number six is to receive such communications, the leader of the council may decide to make. So hello, over to you.
Thank you, Tom. So mine is shortened sweet, so you'll all be pleased to know. So really just a couple of things come to fruition that we want to share and put out there that the Barn of Us is just about ready to start renting out at the end of January. They've worked incredibly hard. Sorry, something went on to that. It has now been renamed. That was my next line, Town Clerk. And it is now been renamed as Twenty Five Barn. So we will be calling it quite a correct name moving forward. And hopefully it'll start to get rented in there and then we'll have an official opening at some point where we'll all go there. And obviously the mayor will be able to cut some charges, so they're only all ridden. So that's fantastic that that's going to be up a little bit out of time scale, but it's going to be up by the new time scale that we did set. So that's fabulous. I really want to thank all of the council officers that have worked incredibly hard over the last year. I really want that noted, how much they work to support us and all the things they do for the community themselves as part of their role. Also supporting us and doing our role. So I really want to thank them. And they do a lot, especially this type of the end of the year, the Christmas period. They have an awful lot of jobs to do as well as their job. And, but it did finish off extremely well with, we had the Christmas lights turned on. There were so many of the officers out there as well as supporting it. And the new lights looked amazing. So it was great to see those up, which is fantastic, especially on this building, they look phenomenal. And also we finished it off with glitter and mint pies for those that are still with us. It was a really super morning and all the officers were out there. Big to thank all the people who do support within the council. My final thanks goes on to all of you, all of you councillors. I'd like to thank you for all your work on your committees. I would particularly like to mention this time round though, the new committee, the environmental and sustainable travel. And so I'd really like to thank all the members on that. Thank you to Chair of that, Steve, for bringing that to fruition. It's a lot of hard work, lots of meetings, now going through every other month, lots of lovely projects that we can get our teeth into moving forward. So that committee this year is, hopefully we'll have some projects that we can start and finish some full achievements to get us on the map of doing something new. So thank you to all of you as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lea. Item number Are there any questions, Phil?
Well, I would like the opportunity to thank the leaders of the council for progressing Sir Barnas now Sonny called Barn. And I'd also like to thank the bit Swepton, who was previous councillor and leader, who helped kick that project off. And I think it's a great reflection to everyone that that's been concluded so quickly. And we do have a centre, a low cost effective division centre for community events. So thank you to all of you for putting that forward.
Any other questions, Phil? Item number seven then is to dispose of any business outstanding from the last meeting. There is none. Item number eight is principal council update from West Sussex County councillor Ian Gibson.
Unfortunately councillor Gibson has been unwell and his voice is slightly weakened at the moment. So he did a written report to be read by the town clerk. I do believe that maybe your voice is strong enough to answer any questions.
I can probably manage questions.
Brilliant.
You are a true good councillor. So Town Clerk, would you like to read the statement?
It's in my throat before I start. The introduction of a booking system at the recycling centre in February has been confirmed. I endeavoured to call in the decision for review on the basis that the cabinet member had not presented any evidence of need, as had been the case for its introduction at the Crawley Centre. The call in was supported by Burgess Hill, Lyddem and Two Chischester based independents. I did not receive any support from other local councillors. The request was dismissed by the county monitoring officer. The key reason was that the decision had been discussed, discussed and endorsed by a scrutiny committee. The committee discussion was actually inconclusive, but the monitoring officer's decision is finally. I used the opportunity of written questions for the December council to set out the information I believe is required to support the decision to introduce a booking scheme and ask whether the council had this. The question and the answers can be found on the West Sussex County Council, council meetings webpage. On the positive side, it turns out that even without a booking system, East Grinstead has the highest recycling rate of all the centres at 84% and only drops to second when green waste is excluded. It's difficult to see how the booking scheme is going to improve these figures, given that East Grinstead is already ahead of centres operating the booking scheme. The major pressures on the current year budget are the children's, young people and learning and skills portfolio. These were predicted to be around £20 million overspent on a £200 million annual budget at the end of quarter two. This overspend is in addition to the continuing growth in the education direct support grant, which is held off budget. Quarter three figure should be available shortly. Notably, the handover of the Woodland Need Special Need School has been delayed twice. The council will be setting the increase in council tax as a maximum allowed, 3% plus 2% for adult social care for the 2425 financial year. The main pressures for setting a balanced budget are the increases in number of special educational needs students and their home to school transport costs. There is also significant cost increases in capital projects. The new four form entry secondary school at Burgess Hill Brookley is being re-tended after no affordable bids were received in response to the first tender. The specification essentially is a passive house school and has not been changed. Although the Inberhorne application is being progressed and includes significant new sports facilities for Inberhorne School, there is no progress on the proposed relocation of the lower school from Winnebago Lane to Inberhorne Lane. The inflationary increases in building costs will push up costs of both the new building and the maintenance work which is needed at Winnebago Lane. Against this background, there is expected to be a significant pressure on year seven secondary school places this autumn. And a bulge class is being planned at Inberhorne Lane with the intention of a permanent change to an 11 form entry. The roadworks of the Park Road, Maypole Road junction are the implementation of a community highway scheme to make the crossing from Crescent Road safer. Frankly, the layout revisions being implemented are not what the requesters wanted. The changes will force residents heading to Holstead Park and other schools to cross Park Road and then Maypole Road, rather than just crossing Park Road to the western side of Maypole Drive. There is a lesson here about being careful what you wish for. The community highway scheme now has no fixed dates and the applications are evaluated immediately. Implementation of anything other than the most minor works like painting the highway will require the support of section 106 funds. I cannot raise requests myself, I can only approve requests raised by others. There is one outstanding CHS request in Inberhorne, which is for pedestrian refuge to make crossing at the A22 London Road safer via Stream Park Fell Water Court. This scheme is unlikely to be considered until the outcome of the 22264 corridor study is known at the end of the year. If I could just intercept at that point, that CHS has now been submitted. So if you're not aware of that councillor Gibson, that has gone in and I will be meeting with them shortly. I appreciate that, but it has been submitted and it's been submitted by this town council. Regarding the A22 A264 corridor study, this was expected to conclude the review of previous studies by the end of the year. But no reports have been issued or announced and there have been no further meetings of the steering group. I'm continuing to monitor the planned resurfacing of Heathcote Drive and the Duke's Head Roundabout next financial year. I do not have dates at the moment. Currently flooding is a greater concern than potholes, but I would encourage everyone to report potholes on the West Sussex County Council pothole webpage as soon as they emerge. The county target for repairs is 28 days. Residents will be able to claim for damage if the pothole is not fixed by then. The county is paying out on a large number of claims from last winter. The process is slow. I think most residents know to take photos and keep receipts. With more local bus services being cut, particularly links to West Hothley, I thought it was worth mentioning the county reintroduced a book of bus service around Chischester last autumn. The new buses have no fixed routes or times. Customers book on a day using an app called Pingu and have to be prepared to wait. This could be something the council should be pressing the county to introduce here, given the need to reduce car usage. The county is continuing to roll out EV charging points in partnership with Mid Sussex District Council and Connected Curb. The focus has moved from car parks to residential streets. My experience is that residents don't want them because of the loss of parking spaces. Some councils are testing systems like Charge Gully, which enable houses without parking to charge their vehicles on the road in the front of the house with the charging cable set in a secure channel cut in the pavement. This seems like a good solution, although you can't always park in front of your own home. The county's upgrade of its business management systems covering finance, procurement, HR and payroll to Oracle Fusion has run into some problems associated with data cleansing and the transfer of records. The programme is currently being reassessed. This is an activity which is expected to deliver major savings in administration costs for the council. The county is already looking ahead to May 25 elections and is holding a number of peer council events. The nearest to East Grinstead is in Crawley on the 20th of February at 6:30pm. That's the report.
Has anyone got any questions for councillor Gibson there?
Thank you, Geoff. Yes, I'd just like to thank councillor Gibson for his work on that recycling. Although it was not what the answers that we all wanted, but I would also like to say to committee that you can actually now cycle to the recycling centre with your refuse if you wanted to. And there will be, your rubbish will be taken away and you can cycle back home afterwards, which you weren't able to do beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you'd start shopping bags on that. Councillor.
Yeah, I too would like to thank councillor Gibson for his sterling work number one at Heathcote Drive. There's some jet cracker, which is a fantastic piece of kit. Councillor Gibson's got three of them, you saw it in action in summer, fantastic. And it's a brilliant temporary job. I'm looking for very much in the next couple of years to a full reset.
I can just say, Geoff, that I've actually got an email this afternoon. I have a question, just what was happening with both Heathcote Drive and the Duke's Head Roundabout, which is, you know, also an area of much discontent amongst residents. They are both out for tender at the moment in order to, so that the financials will be there and the plans are there for the new financial year. And so as soon as I have dates, I will start to tell everyone because it will be major disruption.
Yes, well, that's the other side of the problem, isn't it? You pick one, probably we'll go to spot a temporary one. Any other questions at all? In that case, Deputy Councillor, I would like to do a little thank you.
Yes, thank you, Geoff. I'd like to thank councillor Gibson for his very comprehensive report and Town Clerk reading it so well. A lot, a lot of work goes unnoticed and we all know that you put a shift in for us for that county. And we'd like to thank you for that. So thank you very much.
Okay, item number nine is through receiving sort of the minutes of the committees. We're going to start with councillor Odey for planning and for E and ST as well. You can do it all in one go and save you standing up and down, up and down. As you're a jack in the box tonight, so councillor Odey, thank you.
Yes, before I begin, I would very much like to thank both councillors for their work and efforts of the planning and environmental and sustainable travel. It's been, from a planning perspective, it's been very impactful to me to do three and to me to do four. It's likely to change, so I look forward to that. And with excitement and enthusiasm and optimism, I would like to recommend these minutes, receive these minutes on block if that's okay, committee. First item, planning meeting 16th of October, page numbers 91 to 95, minute number 167 to 173. Planning meeting on the 6th of November 2023, page numbers 99 to 103, minute number 1822190. Planning meeting 27th of November 2023, page numbers 108 to 116, minute numbers 2022208. And planning meeting on the 18th of December 2023, page numbers 134 to 138 and minute number 246253. Would you second?
Could I have a second from the committee? Thank you councillor Pond. Any questions about those minutes at all? Now, if there's no show of hands, adopt those minutes.
Very much, Geoff, yes. Again, thank you to the committee for the environmental and sustainable travel. Very exciting committee and I know that 22264 has been some really cool performance coming through from this council. So I'm very excited about that. I'd like to again put all of these minutes through on block if that's possible. The meeting on the 19th of October, page numbers 96 to 98, minute number 174 to 181. The meeting on the 23rd of November, page numbers 104 to 107, minute number 191 to 201. And the meeting on the 21st of December, 139, page numbers 139 to 143, minutes and numbers 2542264.
Thank you, could I have a second for those please? Thank you councillor Bell, is there any questions on those minutes at all? Nice to see you for a show of hands.
That's carried.
Thank you councillor Odey for chairing a lot of meetings. Next I have councillor Whitaker for public services.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, I have one meeting, but it's a full two hour. As usual, to generate that meeting. First of all, I'd like to thank my wife, Jay, councillor Reed, for fantastic support. And particularly to the Town Clerk for producing in public services extensive reports and research and coordination to make this project a front effort there. So we touched on just some subjects that are in the minutes. Pharmacies, the Lloyd's Pharmacy saying so that the matter of the town and the restructuring successfully. There's a new dispensing machine down at the farm that the pharmacy has established. You can have a look, it's a free wiz bang. Again, in touch with councillor Gibson and also councillor Bell. Councillor Russell for the resurfacing progress continued in the second half of this year, which has been superb. So hopefully that progress continues. Also touched on the open spaces contract now awarded by the district council to Glendale and the impact that that could maybe will have on the town council and its outside services team. So the monitoring progress possibly that contracted has just started in January last week. The rail ticket obviously this town council put in a substantial consultation, so we were delighted that government's backtracked on that. Network rail and they are staying open for the moment. We've got the CCCB of the district council on that and that's had to be cancelled in a project going forward for the next financial year. Police as always is a major discussion point. We welcome Doug Johnson, who's the regional sergeant out of the Crawley station. He was very good. Chris Lovelock is our senior police yes sir in the town and we know he puts himself about a lot and we've seen him a lot and now achieving things. We put it to the police that various town intelligence, that all councils get from time to time and there are various points have been raised, councillor Fennel, councillor Hughes and others who put that to the police. So if we have specific evidence base, we can forward those via the town clerk to the police and available. On it. We were delighted to have the new chief detective officer of Crewe Torridge, James Law, in for finding these things. He started in September, very, very impressive in the whole community world, the great festival being, doing a great Q and A. Got lots of good ideas and the feedback we got, I think the staff are very appreciative of his personality and charisma and putting ideas forward. Combined with that meeting, very crucially, we're still trying to hold morality's feet to the fire in terms of critique. So we had the town clerk was persevered for six months to get M H S integrated care board into this chamber. So we're heading forward, who's the regional N B for West Sussex, so she's attending on Zoom. But we also have Dr Patel, who's the senior partner at Moatfield Surgery. Sort of down through communications for the town clerk and chairman vice chair and the deputy town clerk. Was that Moatfield are significantly impacted over the past year with the position with morality and the special measures that affected in our ring and patient suffering and morality for Moatfield. So we wanted to fly the flag for Moatfield with the public simply. So that was successfully going on really and had a very good cross debate. We had a discretionary food bank, town clerk, you touched on that and you made the initial introduction with them when you visited September. So we had them and they did a very good presentation. Effectively, they've restructured since Covid, quite a lot of new people, certainly a lot of new systems have got a new app in, lots of good ideas. They have external consultants coming in to do systems and advice and financial advice. And the whole service is spread from just providing bare essentials and food to way more than that now. So I would echo what town members said, we support them still basically. So we're continuing to support and going forward. They want to introduce a local bank to source the weather, just to help out some of their clients as well. Our officer, Alice Blatter, obviously came in to talk about some sidebar now. We can add the work there, so that's great. And finally, you already mentioned the recycling centre. We discussed that, but obviously that decision's been taken. So again, we'll continue to monitor that. So thanks to all the committee for those concerns. I'd like to propose the minutes on the thirtieth of November. Adoption pages one one seven to one two three inclusive, minute numbers two oh nine to two two one.
One second. Any comments, any questions? In that case, can I have a show of hands to? Thank you. Thank you for that thorough report there. Councillor Bellsey, please, for me to listen to us.
Thank you, Geoff. And thank you for the vast space and the enthusiasm. I won't go through the whole agenda, but it was packed. And we've got a wide range of exciting, awesome projects for this coming year. But I'd like to propose the minutes for the meeting we held on the seventh of December, page numbers one two four twenty eight and minutes number two one two 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 two.
One second for that, please. Thank you councillor Hughes. Any comments on that at all? Okay, can I have a show of hands to adopt those minutes? Thank you. And last but not least, town leader, could you, for finance and general purposes?
Thank you, Geoff. So I'd like to, I'm not going to make a big speech, you'll be pleased to know I feel that I've had some of my thank yous. So as chair of the Finance, General Purposes Committee, I would like to propose the minutes of the meeting held on the fourteenth of December twenty twenty three. Pages number, one of my glasses, one two nine to one three three, minute numbers two two six to two four five. Please may I have? I'd like to propose those.
Can I have a second for those? Any questions at all? No show of hands to adopt those. Thank you everyone. Item number ten is to authorize the sealing of the following documents. The grant of exclusive right of burial numbers, two three oh seven, two three oh eight, two three oh nine, two three ten, two three eleven, two three twelve and two three thirteen. Could I have a second for those, please?
One second.
Can I have a show of hands to fix the seal? Okay.
That's carried.
Item number eleven is review of the standing orders, financial regulations and code of conduct. This is going to be done in two halves. First half is to advise the council officers reviewed the current standing orders, financial regulations and code of conduct. Have one additional small correction to make on the financial regulation section five banking regulations, which I would like to take first. This came to light after the agenda was issued, but as a substantive item is on the agenda and can be considered. I'd like to propose the rewording of paragraph five point six of the financial regulations, page twenty five, which concerns who has authority to use the town council credit cards. The proposal is to change town promotion manager to estates and civic pride manager. May I have a second for that, please?
One second.
Geoff, just a little bit further, you decided to explain that one because obviously it didn't go out on the agenda. So just have a little bit more meat onto that one. It was simply as we were going through them that the R F O, the responsible finance officer, discovered that we had the old name of the town promotion officer as one of our users of a credit card. And clearly we no longer have that post. So the person who now holds a credit card is actually the civic pride, the estates and civic pride manager. This is simply changing one post name to the other post name. Nothing else is being done on there, that's all it is.
Good for that presentation. Are there any other comments on that at all? In that case, can I have a show of hands to? Thank you. Two other motions regarding the standing orders review have been submitted by councillor Pond for consideration. So before I go to councillor Pond, are there any other matters regarding standing orders for anyone wishes to raise? If not, I then refer to councillor Pond to make his motions, please.
Thank you, Geoff. Thank you, councillors. So on the view of the standing orders and in discussion with the town clerk, I would like to propose the following amendments. So there's two motions here, we'll take them each in turn. So the first one is in relation to standing order thirteen A. And this is in to insert the word being L G A model councillor code of conduct two thousand and twenty. Right, it's approved by L G A, third of the twelfth, two thousand and twenty, as amended, followed by the words by the council. Can I have a second for that, please?
Any comments on that at all? In that case, can I have a show of hands to adopt that wording?
Against, okay.
Against? Abstaining?
Thank you, Geoff. And so this is the ongoing addition to the standing orders, so it's not currently something in place. So this is addition, this is adding thirteen H. In respect of code of conduct ten point two, all gifts and hospitalities accepted or refused of any value should be added to the hospitality book with an estimated value brackets if over twenty five pound. Comma, and where the amount has exceeded fifty pound in value, that entry should also be made in the declaration of interest. Interests within twenty eight days, which will then be notified to the monitoring officer by the proper officer of the council.
Can I have a second for that, mate? Can I have any questions on that? Councillor?
I was just wondering, councillor Pond, why when we have the justice by a little sensation or the National Society of Global Counselors, why we need to add something that is there except for this? Because in our code of conduct, which is one of the questions. Part ten point two there deals with the need to register any gift with an estimated value of these fifty pounds and to register if an offer of a significant gift is refused. So the two things are there already. So I'm just a little concerned if we stop writing words for ourselves and then have to go to the L G A for advice if there's any query on it, when they haven't, they're not part of the or anything else, that the actual legal interpretation could be quite offensive, difficult for the rest of them. Whereas if it's words they've got, then they will have a standard approach if one's prepared. And if the aim is to reduce the threshold to twenty five pounds from fifty, that would be done simply by changing the amount in our code of conduct, which currently says fifty pounds. So there are two places where we're talking, if you put it in a different place, in the amount of conflicts with what exists in a lower part of the documents that we provided. But also, I'm just a little concerned, there's the precise wording of it, as how it would apply. Let's say a simple example. I'm at the test of checking this. So there are things which I would because I would advise us to go and say, because they wanted all the trusties to really pay. That. But this is very the way that it's got, the brackets around twenty five pounds implies that you have to buy everything, everything in there. Every time I attend a meeting that happens, gee, have I actually got to come in every time and register? So that's why wording is important and I think we should get the advice from the L G A. If we're going to make such a change to the I've got no qualms if the aim is to reduce the threshold to fifty pounds, twenty five pounds, I'm sure they would just nod their heads and say, if that's what you want, that's what you want. It's coming up with words that could be taken a different way as where our advisors are not qualified to what we're putting forward. So I would suggest that if that's the aim, we'll pass this to the L G A for their advice and respond accordingly when we're
Councillor Pond, at the end, if we go around the room and then we can come back to you. Councillor Peacock, you raise your hand.
Yes, thank you. I think my thoughts, negative reactions are along the same lines of this councillor Barnett. The first thing I've observed is that these codes of conduct come from now. They're part of the national framework in every single council within England and Wales, as far as we should assume, I think we can assume that will be you using the standard wording, standard, standard English language standard as well. So when we start treating the wording, it will, I would say, without, I would say, extended analysis discussion to answer what the implications are. Councillor Barnett comments on Chequy Mead. Ironically, Chequy Mead used to be owned by the town council directly up to two thousand and sixteen. Every single councillor was in the management committee of that council, of Chequy Mead. The property is owned by the town council. The theory there was set up, the streamlined management of Chequy Mead to make it a more efficient organisation. A number of councillors, I think it was five at the time, were appointed by a councillor of the town council. But this capital meeting, or similar capital meeting, represents there, you know, the council. That's one example. There are another examples I can think of. If we go to an opening of a new building site, a new construction centre, where we might have one or two glasses of champagne, does that need reflect there? We're seeing a Sapa concert today, you know, that has a tangible value. You've been invited as the town mayor of many of us. That is an honour to be there, does that reflect it? So what I would suggest, we need greater time to consider the full implications because we're deviating away from standard national wording and policy. And secondly, if this is a district where I'm monitoring services, there is a committee that would have taken time, maybe a couple of months, working with officers and councillors across the district, political spectrum, et cetera, to discuss this and go through the ramifications. And obviously, this has been on the agenda for a couple of weeks, but it's been across Christmas and I don't know if all councillors have the opportunity to discuss unintended consequences. So I've got no issue if you wanted to change the twenty to twenty five pounds, as councillor Barnett has mentioned. But I think we need to reflect carefully what would be unintended ramifications of this went through. So it's not necessarily against change, what are the unintended ramifications of, as you say, precipitous change? It has to be discussed within the wider group against a national framework of documents. We wouldn't do this if we were part of an international national company. H Q has set what the standard work intervals are and we're in a similar situation. We're a council within a larger framework of England and Wales, there are minor exceptions, happy.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments before councillor Pond comes back on those? If you haven't got? Okay, councillor Pond, put us back and then you've all done.
Based on the two issues that have been raised, councillor Barnett and councillor Peacock, the only advice that I can give is obviously I have spoken with the monitoring officer of the district council and councillor Pond and I have worked on the wording to ensure that the motion did what he was seeking for it to do. We did have a conversation about the discretionary, that's the wrong word, the I can't think of the right word, the interpretation of code of conduct, the interpretation of standing orders. And it does remain and will remain, even with a change, a grey area. And it is down to each and every councillor to determine whether they feel something is affected by the code of conduct. It is down to each and every councillor to make a personal decision as to whether or not, as to the value of something that's been accepted. But first and foremost, it comes back down to what have you accepted and why have you accepted it? Is there any untoward reason behind that? And obviously councillors, I believe, always have that high in their mind when they, when they, when they have anything approached to them or they're asked to attend something, whether it be Chequy Mead, whether it be any other event, opening of a new development or something like that. Planning, as you all know, is something that we are very, very careful about and we're very, very cautious. It's a difficult one. Yes, the standing orders do already have these protections in them or alludes to them, just not quite in the prescribed manner that councillor Pond is seeking to see a little further clarity. It's really very much a shades of grey area. That's why we have the monitoring officer of the district. That's why there is the independent panel at the district, so that when there is concern, questions can be asked and hopefully the correct and the right advice followed. Integrity is the word. In my view, as the clerk, this councillor likes with integrity. If councillors feel that a little bit of tightening up to help with the clarification as to that integrity or as to what they are being asked to do, I don't think it's a major concern. But it's not my decision to make, it is your decision to make. I think that's exactly what I've said to you several times at the councillor pond. So it's very difficult for me to make any particular comment. I don't see major ramifications based on what's being proposed. I can see that there may be some concern as to the nth degree as raised by councillor Peacock. And I guess it's one of those things that will come out in the fullness of time.
And councillor Pond, I think you deserve your time, sir.
Thank you, councillors, for those comments. I'm content to, in turn, if I could. So first of all, this is not really changing anything and what do I mean by that? Our current practice, and I want to address the fifty pounds, twenty five pound. When I joined as new councillor, I'm a new councillor, I asked and looked and tried to figure out what is. Having spoke with the town clerk, it was current process, procedure that we would capture in a hospitality book, everything over twenty five pound below fifty pound. Unfortunately, that is not written anywhere. So what this motion, one of the three bits it's doing is actually writing that down. So currently that is also to protect ourselves as councillors, that there was a process that we all, I believe, followed. So currently that is also to protect ourselves as councillors, that there was a process that we all, I believe, followed. However, it's actually not written in our standing orders. So firstly, that twenty five pound is, my understanding is, has been practiced for a number of years. But actually was nowhere in our standing orders. So that is not changing per se what we have been doing. But it's writing it down so it's very clear, very transparent for everybody. And secondly, therefore, the other point it makes is fifty pound. That is in agreement and in line with the code of conduct. So my motion again is not changing anything. It is purely reinforcing what the code of conduct says into our standing orders. And being very clear, very transparent as to what we are to do as councillors. So this is as much to protect us as councillors, so we know exactly what to do, as it is the transparency of our electorate. And so firstly, so just to reinforce, twenty five pound is what we've been doing, it's just not been written down. The fifty pound was currently in the code of conduct. But to the point that councillor Peacock mentioned, it is a framework. It's a framework we align to. It doesn't tell us how to do things in the nth degree. That is what the standing orders are about. They are about taking that framework. And we are an independent body that can make our own decisions within the context of a framework. And therefore, my wording is purely to take that framework, apply that into our standing orders. So that we actually codify exactly what's happening. And so I've covered the framework. And as I say, there's a lot of grey area. I think the whole point of this motion is to actually take away that grey area. By clearly stipulating that everything over twenty five pounds needs to go in a hospitality book. And that everything over fifty pounds needs to go in the declaration of interest. It's very clear, very concise and is in agreement with the code of conduct. So I'll finish that.
Great. Yeah, I can't come back unfortunately, the way we're going to stick to. We're on standing orders, we're going to stick to the standing orders. So with that round up from councillor Pond at the end, the debate section for this motion. So can I move to a vote? We have on the table to approve that, been seconded. So can I have a show of hands to adopt that point to the standing orders, please?
It was qualified, it was two elements in the source document.
You've done the first one already. The first one's adopted. So we are voting to.
To be very clear, this is to insert a new standing order thirteen A, being the LGA model councillor code of conduct. Sorry, we've done that bit. Apologies. It was, it's the, it's the new, it's the new one, thirteen H. In respect of code of conduct ten point two, all gifts and hospitality accepted or refused or of any value. Should be added to the hospitality book with an estimated value of over twenty five pounds. And where the amount has exceeded fifty pound in value, that entry should be also made in the declaration of interests within twenty eight days. Which will then be notified to the monitoring officer by the proper officer of the council.
Okay, are we all clear what you're voting on now?
I've been used to it until I heard the. Or refused, or gifts and hospitality accepted or refused of any value. I thought it meant any value. Are you actually saying this? I thought it was any value had to be added, with any estimated value that was over twenty five pounds.
Yes, that's right.
But I thought some people were saying it only as if it's.
Sorry, town clerk, that's my understanding was it was the bracket if over twenty five pound was the caveat. So that's what the intention of my motion was. The bracket over twenty five pound was, so we're not to write every pound of pence in coffee. This is around, again, this is with what we have been doing as a council and standing in the capital. Many years, it's everything over twenty five pounds goes in the hospitality book.
No, no, everything goes in the hospitality book. And it's only if it's over twenty five pounds you have to give an estimated value.
I'm not sure that's, that was my intention. I would suggest that, can I do a motion to amend?
You can't. You can't amend your own motion, but somebody else can.
Right, so the way we need to do this, just to, this is where the standing orders in these sort of debates can get unwieldy, okay? So your motion, your motion currently stands, okay? That will need to go to a vote. What would need to happen is that would need to fail and then be amended?
No, I don't think, although that's where we actually are in the procedure. If you, if you now amend this and take it down, the substantive of it can't then go forward. So you can't do that. What I suggest we do before we go to the vote is we have an amendment. And we just need to agree on the wording of that amendment. So if I can be just absolutely clear, what you're asking therefore is that. Only items of value, estimated value of twenty five pounds should be entered into the hospitality book. That's what you're asking for.
If I can state it now, in respect of code of conduct ten point two, or given hospitality accepted or refused. Over the value of twenty five pounds should be added to the hospitality book, forced. Where the, where the amount exceeds fifty pound in value.
Right, so, so what you would like to do is move the if over twenty five pounds words. And you'd like them to be.
After.
Refused.
Yes.
Yes, so that it would read, in respect of the code of conduct ten point two, all gifts and hospitality accepted or refused if over twenty five pounds. Should be added to the hospitality book, right? So what you're asking for somebody to please move is an amendment to strike out the words of any value. And to replace them with the words which are currently in brackets following the word value. If over twenty five pounds and to move that from one point to the other. Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yeah, that's what somebody, which I'm afraid can't be councillor Pond as he is the original, move of the original. Motion, so he can't amend it. Somebody else will need to make that amendment. Which will then be voted on and then that becomes a substantive and then we then vote on the substantive at that point. So does anybody wish to make that amendment? Thank you.
Can I have a second for that? Okay, so we have that amendment in there now.
Well, can we, no, you need to vote on the amendment.
We'll vote on the amendment, please. Is it just on the amendment? Excellent, thank you.
So your substantive now reads, is this right?
Everyone listen very carefully now, please.
I'm sorry, save this, I knew that. Please tell me this is right. In respect of code of conduct ten point two, all gifts and hospitality accepted or refused if over twenty five pounds. Shall be added to the hospitality book with an estimated value. And where the amount has exceeded fifty pounds in value, that entry should also be made into the declaration of interests within twenty eight days. Which will then be notified to the monitoring officer by the proper officer of the council.
Thank you. Town clerk, just a small order. Can anyone come back on that discussion? We discussed it now that's been amended.
They shouldn't come back on substantive, but if there's anything they wish to say about the amendment, I think it would be all right for you to accept it.
If the amendment has altered your questions or points of views or you have a question on it, then please say no.
It's just so I can understand, because this is fast moving, no effect to councillor Pond, but this is what it means, there are only ten to four successes yet. Although I should say a rather quick process. So what does this in reality mean, councillor?
Is it literally adding some things to the, to the book as I said, past that?
I believe that that's absolutely right, what you will now be, if I'm correct, and this is how I'm going to read this. So please tell me if this is not how you understand it. If, this is stating that therefore, all gifts and hospitality accepted or refused if over twenty five pounds. Gets added into the hospitality book with a value, which means amounts of under twenty five pounds do not get added into the hospitality book. Which is the current position. So therefore the change is that you will no longer be declaring nominal amounts.
So just to clarify for you, councillor Peacock, and I think, I know you want to say something.
Town clerk, I've just answered.
Is, at the moment, this is how we operate. Anyway, all that this motion is doing is formalising it at this point. And I do think, I was keeping quiet on the matter beforehand, it was a bit grey and I didn't get it. That amendment has now just formalised what we currently do. I shouldn't really let you come back on it, just to be. So we are now just formalising something that can exist. It is not, this is not a significant change as it was originally, actually.
The only difference you now have is that any amount which has been accepted or refused, that's, that's one of the things.
Now has no, yes.
If over twenty five pounds must be included in your hospitality book. Whereas before, you were only required to make any declaration or anything refused over fifty pounds on your declaration of interests.
I think the reality here is the numbers of gifts that are accepted or refused by any councillors are actually very, very small. In any councillor's position, when they are mayor, it is treated slightly differently because you go to lots and lots of things. But as regular councillors, it is very, very small. I think I've declared a handful of things ever in the, in the many years I've done, so. Please can we move to a vote to adopt this with the approved amendment? All in favour, please raise your hands.
I'll take against if people cannot.
And against.
But that is a carried, carried motion.
Thank you. I bet you all, when you signed up to be councillors, wanted to be discussing these sort of things, didn't you? Right. Okay. So, and number twelve is to approve the dates of council meetings for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Please recommend, I would recommend that you approve the following dates in twenty four, twenty five for all council to meet. Annual council Monday the thirteenth of May, special council twentieth of June. Council first of July, council seventh of October, council sixth of January. Special council twenty seventh of January and council seventh of April. Please cast a second on this. Any questions on that? Can we show of hands to adopt those dates? We can get even more fun now. We go on to, and number thirteen, financial risk, where the stuff. The impact rating on the following items has been amended. Do I, you need me to read all of these out?
They're in the agenda, so maybe you don't need to read them all out.
There are a lot, they are in the agenda. Who's referred to them in the agenda? Because to read them all out will be quite boring, but some, they are all in the agenda. Hopefully you've all read the agenda. Can I propose those? No, second. Any questions on those at all? Can I have a statement from there now?
I just wanted to thank town clerk and Dan and all the officers for the work they've done for that. It's a really good, it's very reassuring to know that we're in safe hands. Thank you.
In that case, can I show of hands to me? Thank you for allowing me not to read all that out. I am slightly dyslexic in reading all those letters and notes that make my eyes hurt. Earmark reserves, the agenda refers to request to, there's some earmark reserves. It is clear that reserves are no longer needed. They should be returned to general reserves. Or in this case, reallocated as a vehement from one cost centre to another. Movement to reserves is a power reserve for full council. As the Sunnyside Barn project is needing funds, councillors are requested to allow them to be beared for this use. I propose that we bear from cost centre four hundred slash four oh nine nine. D fib batteries, one thousand pound, leaving three thousand, three hundred and twenty one pounds in reserve. Cost centre nine 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 slash four one eight two graffiti removal, two thousand five hundred. Leaving one thousand eight hundred and nineteen in this reserve. This will create a three and a half thousand pound earmark preserve principally for new tables and chairs at Sunnyside Barn. And a new cost centre three hundred slash four oh six one. May I have a second for that?
I've got a second.
Do we have anyone wishes to speak on this at all? All those in favour? Thank you, council, for a long meeting, a full meeting, and we had some good council discussions there. Well done. That was, that was, that was good. In that case, I would like to close tonight's meeting and remind you all that the next meeting of town council is Monday the twenty ninth of January. For budget and precept. The time is eight twenty six.